We're back on. Okay, and we welcome everyone to our regular agenda for today, September 22nd at 2:00, or a few minutes after, 10 after 2:00. And as we do for all of this commission meeting, we would like to begin with a prayer reading or a thought followed by a pledge of allegiance. Would anyone in the company here like to offer a prayer, reading, or a thought? We usually leave that open-ended for anyone that would like to volunteer. Please, thank you. And when you... Shh, shh, shh.
That would be great.
Would you like to provide the pledge?
I'm afraid of lighting. So... Okay, well, I'll open a prayer if that's all right.
Please, state your name if you would.
Andrew Howard, Provo, Utah. Join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we ask thee please bless these proceedings that we might be united as Americans first, that we might hearken to our Bill of Rights, and that we might reconnect to our roots. We ask that this hearing be civil and fruitful. We ask thy divine blessing upon our fellow man and the United States of America. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
I recently read something that I wish I could write in Paul's favor, and it states that this nation and its founding is so strong that the only thing that can ever destroy it will be by those who are citizens here and those who live here. And there we are, keeping America strong, thanks to everything we want to do.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to offer the pledge? Please, ma'am. Come to the podium and lead us.
Yeah, come to the mic and state your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's outlined how this process, we typically work this. We have what we call a consent agenda. We go through the, all the several, today we have 44, but we consider of all of these which ones that we may want to discuss at some length. Those that we've already gone through ahead of time, as I have already done, as the others two commissioners have done. If there are no comments or discussions, then we just simply put them on what we say consent item. We just simply go through them and then agree that we don't need to have a discussion on those, and we make approvals for those consent. So what I will do is we will do that first, we will then go to the regular agenda, and then after that regular agenda, we will have time for public comment. And what I would like to do is ask if there are those here for one topic or other topics, but I'll bring that up when we get to that point, and that way we can have as much hearing as possible on that. If there are public comments, and as we've published, it'll be limited to two minutes per person. With that, let's go ahead and go through the regular agenda. Items 1 through 10, are there any items that you think we should hold and discuss, Commissioner Gardner?
I do not have any.
11 and 12 seem to be similar to the previous, but 11 through 20, are there any others that you feel that we should hold and discuss?
No, I do not.
I would like to touch on number 13. I'd like to hold that for just a bit to bring some clarity to that one. And as point of reference, and perhaps 16, which I'll make a very brief comment on that Okay, 21 to 30, are there any others?
Yeah, I would like to hold item number 25 for some questions as well.
Hold 25?
Yeah, as well as table item number 28.
Table 28.
And then, let's see, and then on number 30, I would like to continue number 30 until the next commission meeting when Commissioner Lee can be here.
Continue 30, is what you're proposing? And then items 31 through 40.
I do not have any.
I think I would like to continue 31 because that one has to do with water disposal, water and sewage disposal facilities.
We do have several people from, that are here to speak on that issue. So if you're here to speak on item number 31, could you raise your hand for us? Yeah, I think...
I know Commissioner Lee wanted to talk through that as well. We can still have a discussion.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, and I'm fine with that. Let's have a discussion since they have come, but we don't have to make a decision on it until Commissioner Lee has a chance to come back.
And this way Commissioner Lee can review the comments that are made, and it'll be recorded on YouTube, and he can look at it, and then when we do reconvene on that item, we can then go further.
Yeah, so let's...
Then we'll have a discussion and then follow with continuing.
So we'll do that one as well, 31.
Are there any others through 40?
I do not. Um, wait, there, let's see. I think that was it that I have, I don't have any others.
And do we have any items for closed? We have, we usually close our meetings to the public for certain items that have to do with individuals that we want to talk without exposing their identities for privacy purposes.
Dave, which meetings do we need?
Legal concerns.
If we have 41 and 42 we'd like to have, we could strike 43 and 44.
Strike 43, 44, and table 41, 42 for closed.
Who's coming in for 44? Oh, Danita's coming in for number 44.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll just strike 43.
Yeah, so if that changes, we can strike separately then, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Alice, did you get all of that?
Yes, would you like me to repeat it?
Please.
That would be great.
I have us holding agenda item number 13, 16, 25, tabling 28, continuing agenda item number 30 to the next meeting, holding 31. And then for closed meetings, we're going to hold as stated numbers 41, 42, striking 43, and holding 44.
Okay.
Yep, that's what I have.
And what we will do is we will have public comment before we go into closed session for 41, 42, and 44.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's it. Okay, I ask that we hold on 13 for a couple reasons. I understand disagreement between the county, Utah County, and Brigham Young University is a, what we call pass-through funding. It's funding that comes from either the state or federal government that we then move it on to an entity, in this case Brigham Young University. I'm going to motion to approve it, but what I wanted to highlight is the partnership values, health equity, respect and ethics, open and honest communication, team learning, sharing, credit, collaboration, coordination, and those are all allowable. But health equity, the term health equity is, seems to be taken on a different approach. The CDC defines it as, in so many words, the potential because of social position or other socially determined circumstances. And it goes further on to discuss in Oxford that sometimes it's society, technology, or media that exerts undue influence to force someone to be in a certain kind of category. And it has to do with ethics and morals which are very, very closely aligned to each other. My concern is that the socially determined circumstances. I'm personally aware of those who are impoverished, at one time they're very wealthy. I know those who have been wealthy, or are wealthy, who are also impoverished. Most people who are middle classes, it's been known to be, said to be middle class, are those who have been in both categories and have struggled most of their life. So all of us have gone through some kind of stress or upward mobility in life trying to get our way through life. And so my concern is the health equity. There has never been a time that, I remember as a boy getting polio shots as an elementary school, and it was no big deal to my parents at the time. It was provided by the public, but, and this was in a farming community, kind of out in the middle of Maryland. As far as I can tell, the United States as a body, as a country, has always tried to reach out to what we now call underserved communities. And I don't think there's ever been a time that they've not reached out. And so I wanted to at least raise an awareness to us as a government body that there has always been health equity. We've always tried to reach out, but I'm concerned about socially determined phrase, circumstances, that I'm going to decide what category of life you're going to enjoy because of, I'm going to forcibly impose my social will on you as an individual or individuals, and you cannot get out of that circle, which I personally reject. I think most people are able to get out of the circles, and those who can't, I've known of those who have been those kinds of positions of every conceivable class, and I'm thinking specifically in new immigrants. My, I mentioned once before, my great-grandfather immigrated in 1885 from Lithuania. And in that country, it used to be a bondit serf environment, in other words, a slave environment. And he came to the United States, left his family behind for two years, excuse me, he left Lithuania for two years, and learned to be a coatmaker in Baltimore, Maryland, went back, and through a marriage arrangement, he found his wife, and they married, they came to the United States. But all their lives, they struggled financially. And they, so I'm hoping I'm making sense here. The point is that I do not believe that there's any group of people that is forcibly forcing on another group of people, they cannot move out of their circle of life. It's up to individuals. There are exceptions, of course, there are exceptions everywhere, but as a whole, we as a country do not compel someone to stay in whatever status of life they're in. So I'm not challenging this particular thing, I just, I'm concerned about that one partnership value.
Yeah, hopefully I can shed some light on, on this project and what it's for, and why I'm, I don't have any concerns of any impositions or anything being cast on any, any of our, our sectors of, you know, our great Utah County residents here. This, we're fortunate to receive funding from the Utah Department of Health to help close gaps that, in, in access to COVID response. So to provide vaccine to the homeless population, to those unfortunately who are, lack health insurance, or have no insurance, this would be intended to help with them. This would be intended to help anybody who might lack transportation to get to their doctor, so, in ensuring that they have the, the care needed to be able to overcome any challenges, the, to prevent COVID infection. So this, this grant is simply to, with BYU, funds are, we're lucky to have two universities in this county who are experts in public health and public service, and this one specifically is with Brigham Young University, to have five champion organizations that already work with the homeless, and already work with anyone that might need of services to help them, and, and they will be working directly with these communities. So I see it as a really good positive opportunity for us to expand our reach through the public health programs at BYU. This one's for BYU. We're currently working with UVU as well to, they'll work with the public safety sector and, and making sure that we can, and expand even more, do way more than the health department could, or other partners could all by themselves. So this is a joint partnership.
I appreciate that. You and I have spoken since I came into office in January, but I just want to make sure that we are not, we can't control the language because this is a federally directed language here, but we can at least control locally how we approach people, that we're not keeping anyone in whatever circumstance they're in.
Yeah, that'd never be our intent. This is simply to...
We're not trying to...
Close gaps and disparities of health, and that's it. So it's a, it's a super positive and great project, so, thanks for your support.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on that?
I don't have any. Commissioner Gardner?
Great, thank you.
I didn't say my name, Eric Edwards, Utah County Health Department, thank you.
You're the health director for Utah County, okay.
Yeah, all right, I will make a motion to approve item number 13.
And I can second that motion, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes 2-0. And item 16, approve and authorize signing of an agreement with Boncom for an awareness educational program or campaign. This has to do with medical cannabis. And I had asked health department director, isn't there enough support from, it's about a grant of about $15,000 to help with this education forum, campaign in the use of medical cannabis? And I had asked earlier, isn't there enough support from physicians, family doctors, medical professionals? Would you go ahead and talk through that?
I'm Heather Lewis, I work for the Utah County Health Department, and this particular funding would go to create prevention messaging for patients themselves, actually. I don't know if you're familiar with Parents Empowered. It's a campaign to educate parents about the harms of underage drinking and how alcohol can damage a teen's brain, and this is the same concept, it's just with cannabis. And at this point, we know that we have pharmacies that are dispensing medical cannabis, but we don't have any prevention messaging to educate parents about, you know, restricting, making sure that their kids don't have access. And so the point of this funding is to, and Boncom is a media company, and so some coordinators like myself from across the state are pitching in funding to do a statewide campaign so that the messaging is unified and continual throughout the state. That can be used in pharmacies or, you know, wherever patients might be, so that they can have, you know, educational pieces about making sure that they keep their medication locked up when they're not using it, or that they dispose of it properly when it's, when they're done, things like that.
Okay.
Do we do similar campaigns for opiate medications?
We absolutely do.
Benzodiazepines?
We have, there was one that was specifically for opioids called Use, or Use Only, no. Now, my brain just went totally, Use As Directed, Use Only As Directed. And now there's one, so that was specifically for opioids, now they've, they've changed it, and it's called Know Your Script, and that includes stimulants and benzodiazepines and opioids, all of them that might be dangerous.
Okay, and who funds that campaign?
The Know Your Script campaign is being funded, that's, gosh, it's prevention funding dollars across the state goes into that medication, or I want to say tax dollars. I know the Parents Empowered campaign is funded by the sale of alcohol, but I can't say for sure exactly where all the funding comes from for Know Your Script, but I can find out. I know some of it is taxpayers, but I'm not sure.
And where is the funding for this one coming from?
This, this one is from the State Division of Substance Abuse and Mental Health. They give us dollars to use for prevention services, and so this is pass-through funding. It's a federal grant from the Division of Substance Abuse and Mental Health.
And it's, it's for all substances?
Mm-hmm.
How, and how much is the contract on this one?
$15,000. The overall contract?
This, this...
Yeah, I'm wondering what percentage of the, yeah, so I guess both. How much do we get from the state for prevention services, and then what percentage of it is this money?
I am horrible at math, that's why I'm social worker. But the, the, the funding at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the fiscal year was $549,000 roughly, and so $15,000 of it is this set aside for this media campaign.
Okay.
This is a, I'd just add, this is a proven model. Parents Empowered is a fantastic program with, that prevents youth alcohol access and, and other educating folks on preventing youth access too. This will do the same with the medical marijuana, so, and we will be one of multiple health districts also pitching in to create a statewide wide media campaign. So we're, this is part of it, is, so it will be a statewide educational campaign. So anything else to add?
I think that covers it. Do you have any other questions?
No, I just want to clarify that physicians and medical professionals alone haven't been sufficient to get the message across on how to properly, appropriately use medical cannabis.
Well, and interestingly enough, the providers actually only get like four hours extra training to provide cannabis, which is another reason why we want to make sure that we're educating these parents so that they know, you know, it might be okay for you, but don't give it to your kids, they, it's not good for a teenage brain.
I don't have any questions for the question.
Nope, I don't.
Thank you, Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to provide number 16.
Okay, and I can second a motion, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. The next one is item 25.
Yeah, and I just had some questions on this. So I was told that you had some explanation a little bit on this one.
Yeah, I don't know if you need a lot of it, commissioners, but this has been Stanley, Utah County Attorney's Office. This item came from an agreement that was approved by the commission in late April of this year, April 21st, agreement number 371, was approved as for a trash compactor at the county jail. And that agreement was signed and approved here at the commission level for Utah County and then sent on to the vendor. They had some turnover, kind of lost track of it, didn't sign it, and then brought a new legal team in to look at it and wanted to make some changes. We pushed back on a lot of other changes. They asked for about a couple dozen changes, and ultimately they had three that they said were deal breakers that never should have gotten through in the earlier negotiations, and they wanted to have it revisited by this commission. So they changed the entity name, they wanted to make sure we weren't using their doing business as name, but their full legal entity name. We don't have any objection to that in the county attorney's office. They wanted to make some minor changes to insurance language, which we had no objections to. They wanted us to indemnify them, instead of them indemnifying us, we refused on that point, but they did want some limiting of their indemnification obligation. So that's the most significant change from what was approved in April, that indemnification language shifts, they don't have an indemnification obligation under this revised agreement if injury or some kind of harm comes from the act, the negligence or willful misconduct of the county itself, or from third parties. So if a sheriff deputy throws another deputy into the trash compactor, they are not indemnifying us for that. And if children are playing by the trash compactor and a third party gets hurt somehow in that trash compactor, they don't want to indemnify for that. We're okay with those changes, but the commission should be aware of them, and it's, obviously it's your choice whether or not that's an agreement that you're willing to accept on behalf of the county. So, and are there any other questions?
I have none.
I don't. Dave, do you have any concerns with it? Okay.
Thanks.
All right, absolutely.
Thanks, Ben.
My pleasure.
I will make a motion to approve item number 25.
And I can second item, that can second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that's 2-0, it carries. Item 28.
We tabled that.
Yes, I'd like to table that to close, which we've already done. So item 30 then, is to be continued.
30 was continued.
Should we, how long do we continue that, a full week?
Just until the next, yeah, until the next commission meeting.
Which is the...
I think it's the 29th.
Which is the 29th of September.
Yeah.
So that, September 29th, okay, 2:00.
Actually, can I continue that for two weeks? I won't be here at the next one on the 29th. I'll be flying, I'll be on an airplane.
So October 6th?
Yeah, October 6th, if we can continue that till October 6th.
You have that, Alice? Okay.
Thank you.
Then, item 31 then.
Yeah, it looks like...
Dave, would you give us a summary, or Bryce, excuse me, Bryce give us a summary, and then we'll hear from the public on that. Members who are here for that?
Bryce Armstrong, Community Development. So this is a, an action item that's been placed on your agenda, the follow-up to a work session item that we had a discussion on a couple weeks ago. I'll go ahead and just maybe briefly review that.
Please.
For anyone who maybe, who may have missed that. If you recall, earlier in the year, 1st of January, we had a work session presentation from the state engineer's office that indicated a significant over-allocation, over-appropriation of water in Utah County, and really most of the state, is subject to what they call a general adjudication of water rights. And so Utah County is subject to one of those general adjudications. More specifically and more concerning was a certain area of the county, Hubble Creek Canyon, that had, had the most concern. And as a result, the Utah State Engineer's Office ordered a, what's called a water distribution system, which tries to help address this over-allocation of water rights, still pending the adjudication completion, that's still ongoing, it's not, not been completed, and from what I understand, may, may, it's been going on for decades, and it still has maybe years before it's determined. But in the interim, this distribution system has been created to kind of help mitigate some concerns in the Hubble Creek Canyon area, establishing a priority system based on an appropriation priority date of, of an underlying water right. It gets quite technical, but the gist of that, and the message we heard in January was that potentially people's water sources or water could be, would be turned off.
And the reason they're turned off, because the water levels have dropped so significantly that it's just not available?
Yes, I think there's a review, a system in place to kind of review and make sure certain, certain higher priority rights are guaranteed to have their flow, and, and as a result, they're, they'll establish a cutoff date, and if people fall outside of that cutoff date, they could potentially have their water turned off. So obviously that causes some concern, we have a number of residences up there and other uses that utilize water, and so the commission wanted the planning commission to review a potential amendment to perhaps, to address this potential situation. So in April, the county commission referred to the planning commission an amendment. Currently we have an ordinance that requires a person to get their water source and their sewage disposal source approved prior to getting a building permit for a home or other use. This is an amendment to that section that makes it a little more robust in its review and its requirements. And the planning commission received a, a proposal from the county commission in April, held two public hearings this summer, and made a recommendation back to the county commission. They amended that original recommendation, both versions have been included in, in the backup to this request. In summary, the proposal that's been recommended by the planning commission does several things. Number one, it requires any person who comes in for a building permit that will be utilizing a water source to sign and record a waiver disclaimer form, acknowledgement form, that acknowledges their awareness of this adjudication process, and then also releases the county from potential liability of, of their loss of water and any damages that might be associated with that. That is proposed to be required countywide. In addition, the proposal spells out some of the replacement water requirements if a property owner does in fact lose their water. Some of that was already implied in our current ordinance, this proposal just kind of solidifies that and clarifies that. And then probably most effectively, this proposal would require, in the Hubble Creek area, the Hubble Creek drainage area, as defined by, by this distribution system, a person who wants to receive a permit for a use... who wants to receive a permit for a use that requires water would need to have a, an expert statement, either an attorney or an engineer, verify that their water right, their underlying water right, has an appropriation priority date that would be consistent with any distribution system, any court decree, to make sure that it, it falls within the parameters of those, those systems that have been put in place. That would be required to be provided to the county prior to that permit being issued. And there are, there's a couple of exceptions. One, if, if it was, if a water source is a municipal source, which we do have in Hubble Creek Canyon, there's some, some properties that utilize a municipal water source, Springville City Water. And, and then also it spells out if, if a person does lose their water, they have to, you know, get the replacement water in the amounts specified and also have that statement accompany that replacement water.
So if someone wants to build, they have to show this is where they're getting their water from?
Yeah, they already have to do that now, but they have to show, they have to have an expert statement. They'll have to go out and hire an engineer or an attorney to verify, to do the research to make sure that, that underlying water right accompanying or associated with that water source is a right that is consistent with this distribution system that has been ordered, that, since that January meeting, that distribution system has been ordered by the county or the state engineer, or a result of the, of the general adjudication, which, you know, I'm sure will happen in the future, to make sure that it's consistent with those, those results. And so that's kind of what, where the proposal's at.
The underlying reason for all of this is because the water sources are, are diminishing over time.
Well, yeah, and I think that fluctuates obviously with environmental factors and such, but I think the bigger concern is the, the rights are overappropriated. And so, and I think that's a problem statewide. And so you, you combine those two factors and you can get a situation where we are at, what's been represented that we're at in Hubble Creek where, you know, water is going to be shut off. And that's, that's a concerning thing to hear when you have homes up there and, and you have people wanting to build up there, new homes. In fact, I think we mentioned this last time, this is a, what's called a pending ordinance and as per state and county statute, we can't act on a, an application that would be affected by this proposal until it's, that proposal has been completed. And so we do have several, I could think of at least one permit that is ready to be issued, but is, is on hold pending this outcome, specifically in Hubble Creek Canyon, because they may need to go through an additional process.
Yeah, they have to identify what water, the water sources and the, how they're going to control the sewage, okay.
So.
So basically, if we adopt the ordinance, it is, but we're going to continue, so it basically puts in place the very, the outline you just described.
Yep, that's, that's what's been recommended by the planning commission for, for approval by the, the county commission. The county commission has the ability to approve it as is, to make changes to it, approve portions of it, deny it, keep it the way we're at. I, we did have, I think, so as part of this water distribution system, there was a, there's been a river commissioner that's been hired. I believe he was going to be here today, but he got wind that it potentially was going to be continued, so I don't know if he's here or not. I think that input may be helpful. I don't know if there's anyone from the state. I think they were, they were made aware of this, but it probably took up too much time. It's kind of complicated subject, so.
It's been long and drawn out and very difficult to work through.
I believe there may be some people that may want to comment on that, on this, so.
Yeah, I think we have five.
So we're, me and representatives from Public Works and, and attorney's office are available for any questions if needed.
So you know where he lives? Please, but come forward, and when you come, state your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Joel Farah. I'm, I'm just here to represent my clients and just advocate for them for what we're trying to do. I'm pretty sure it's our, I, I'm a general contractor. I'm pretty sure it's our building permit that he's referring to that's, that's ready to go. Is that accurate? Davy's Design Builds Lambert? Yeah. So I think what, what it boils down to for me, the, the thing that I could probably be most effective at articulating right now is that there isn't anything about what we're doing to the, to the property that has any effect on the outcome of what the state's trying to do with the water. Like, it doesn't affect the county's ability to inspect the work. There's already water to the home, it's a remodel. There's, there's literally no reason or cha, you know, like, even if the client, even if my client had to bring up tanks of water to use the facility or for us to finish construction, we could do that. Like, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to go ahead and finish this, this remodel and, and get it to the point where they can, you know, use their home. Anyway, we just don't see any, any significant effect on, on the outcome of this. And just kind of supplementary, we've had, we've had our, our septic tank approved for a couple months at least, and nobody said anything to us at the health department about, about this or the fact that we were going to have a hard time. They approved our septic tank, which has, which is completely related to the water supply, so we don't understand why, why the health department wouldn't already know about this since they have to, when we, I can't remember his name, but he even brought up the fact that things have to go through the health department first and get approved before they can go in if they have like a septic tank or anything. So that, that's really the only thing I have to put forth is that, you know, we need our building permit and we don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to, to have a building permit. And that's pretty much it for me.
Hi, my name's Carrie. I'm the, one of the owners of the building permit that we're waiting on right now. And as my builder said, pretty much, he said it all, is just, we have a half born apart house that we've been paying for, for almost a year that we cannot now use. Again, we're not asking for any, any additional water. What we have is sufficient. It's more or less just changing the structure of rooms and such. So yes, we are aware of the water situation and we're not trying to fight that in any means. We're just trying to get our permit released so that we have opportunity to use the structure that we are now paying for and paying very high taxes for, as many of us are. So I think, oh, and there's also, you know, we're required to have, we're, and that's one thing, is we're required to have fire suppressants on all homes in there, and if we don't have the, if we don't have the means to use it, then, you know, there's fire danger on all of these homes if we don't have certain amount of usage to even protect the structures and the, everything that's there. So I think that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Carol Ferguson, Hubble Creek Canyon.
Carol.
I was really glad to hear what Bryce Armstrong was saying about making sure water is available before approving any permits. And I'm hoping that a W, a willing to serve letter is not going to be adequate, because most of us have willing to serve letters that were supposed to guarantee our perpetual use of water. We had a maintenance agreement involved with our community and cottages at Hubble Creek, which the county is one of the three parties in agreement with a maintenance agreement, supporting us having each lot having 2.95 acre feet of water annually. There are 35 lots in our community. We've already been told we are not going to have that much water. We did our due diligence when we, before we bought our property. We got our CCNRs and we got the maintenance agreement, and the maintenance agreements signed to which the county as a party said we had 2.95 acre feet of water. So we thought that we had done enough research and we built a home. So the county is not released from the liability of our community because we do have the maintenance agreement. There are no, no notes on our plat to indicate that we need to check with the state to assure that we do have water on our property. Let's see, there are over 150 homes in Hubble Creek Canyon, and so there will be a lot of people that will be suffering if they don't have water. I was really surprised when I attended the planning commission meeting last night, that the county is still approving applications to change the Utah County land use ordinance and doing text amendments. When we know, it's obvious from what Bryce Armstrong has said, that the county is quite aware of the desperate situation of the water in the canyon. I don't understand, that last night, it was said many times, water is not an issue, water is not an issue. I beg your pardon, water is the issue. You cannot surprise, you cannot survive without water, and it is a matter of the health, safety and welfare of people in the canyon if they don't have water. So it appears that it would be wise for the county not to consider any applications for changes, or applications to build new subdivisions until they know that the water is available and until there is some kind of enforcement for what you do pass. There are five communities, subdivisions that have been built in Hubble Creek Canyon. Only one of the five was approved as year round. The others were approved for seasonal, and that has not been, been enforced. They have become year round subdivisions. And so that is a strain on the water right there in and of itself. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address my concern.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Dion Baron, and I live, live at 3 South Meadow Drive in Springville, and it's up in the cottages. I have a question, and it's not rhetorical, I mean, I really do want to answer, is in regards to Upper Whittemore and that community, what actions is the county taking in enforcing seasonal occupancy? Right now, it says 180 days annually, and of, at times like this with, with the struggles of questions, it's not a personal question about someone or, or individual, but, but I know someone that is putting all of their money, all of their money into a home up there. He's retired and she's working the last few years. He's camping out there at these building, and this is their permanent home. They have nowhere else to go. This is all of their assets they're putting into this home. It's not a 180 day period for them. They, they don't have a vacation home. This is their home. What is, so I really do want to answer, and it can't be, I'm not expecting it now, but maybe in writing back to me, what is the county doing to enforce the 180 day occupancy of Upper Whittemore? Thank you for letting me ask the question.
Thank you.
My name is Janice Reebe. I live at 146 Hubble Creek Canyon Road in Hubble Creek. My home is about 1.8 miles from the division of the road at Rotary Park. Our family has lived there for 20 years, and during that time, we have purchased continuing water shares, a lot of continuing water shares, because they had a priority date of 1851, which makes them first class water rights. Because of the low status of the creek, we are no longer able to use the agricultural equipment that we use to water our fields or even around our home. So this is a continuing, very difficult issue. All three of us, almost like the Three Musketeers, have been in here often, and that was because in 2017, there was a flood. And this is a consequence of it. This is a home. It wasn't just in any subdivision. It flooded our basement, it flooded our neighbor's basement. We know that we lived there, and still we are in a drought. In 2018, we were evacuated again. This is a view of the fire. It happened to us in 2018 and it happened to us in 2019. The dilemma with that is that you cannot get in and out of the canyon unless you use dead end, very dangerous Hubble Creek Canyon Road. So when we came, we were adamant about this, because it does threaten our health, safety and welfare. While we were attending to that, the state has moved forward with what has been discussed, which is this 12-page document, and I will submit it. I sent an email regarding this, but I will submit this also because I live in Hubble Creek Canyon and has terrible receptions, no cell towers, et cetera. So I would like to, pardon me, congratulate the planning division staff, Bryce Armstrong, for trying to deal with a very, very complicated application at the planning commission meeting last night. I know that they're an advisory about body, but I was literally, and I will say that, that the application was to change the Utah County land use ordinance to allow in critical environment one, which is the aquifer protection area, is made, been made CE1 because water and building up there don't just affect up there. It's 31 miles from the end of the canyon, and there is this map colored. I couldn't find it. So the bottom line for me last night was the shock that I felt, because I knew the property, I knew the owner, I knew what was taking place, and he was applying for a commercial. Gosh, it went out of my head. Commercial, Dude Ranch, there we go. And my gosh, my family's been a ranching family for years. A commercial Dude Ranch, a commercial reception center, a commercial campground, and making it possible for him to do that by amending the Utah County land use ordinance. When we tried to speak to the issue of water, fire, et cetera, it was made clear to us twice that we couldn't talk about water. It was only about zoning. So I would like to read from the statute quickly, what the CE1 statute and CE2 statutes are. They are native pasture, watershed and wildlife habitat. It's also the source of wildfires. We can attest to that flooding and avalanche, because when the wildfire scars are made, then the avalanche falls down. And is the water recharge area for the culinary aquifers used by the cities and is the range essential to wildlife. The watershed area is environmentally fragile and its preservation is of critical importance to the county. The planning commission approved, i.e. recommended the Dude Ranch. It did not recommend the reception center. It pushed forward or retained the campground and the other issues that would have made it possible. I would like to speak quickly. I understand that there are time limits, but I would like to tell you that I have been very involved with the, it's called the Utah County, it's called the Hubble Creek Canyon Distribution System. Presently, you have to certify with an, with a private engineer whether or not you have water. The state engineer is the final say about that. I live with, downstream. The canyon is eight miles long, it's all a watershed. Our family has, water rights have been cut by 50%. Nobody owns the water, you have the right to divert it, and it's been cut by 50%. People who are up in the Whittemore, water has been cut by 67%. It's a huge issue, and so I, my position is, it seems appropriate that something be put on a plat and/or a notification that is not just this big or in that is not just this big or in the daily herald that says there are water issues before people are in the position that these people are in, have purchased homes and have no water. So if we can be part of the solution, we'll come back when you talk about water and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
My name's Jenny Lambert. I am the owner of the in question lot that we've been talking about. It's lot 17 in Upper Whitmore. And I just wanted to reiterate, this is a 15 year old home. I did not build it. We are, we bought it a year ago and are just trying to remodel it. That's all we're doing. We're not changing the footprint of the home in any way. We're just trying to update it and, and fix it up and that is all. I was giving, given a waiver to sign to waive away my water rights. That frustrates me because all of Upper Whitmore should be doing that, not just me. We're up there or at least hope to be up there a few weekends, often on throughout the summer months. That's all. I just want to be able to get a drink of water and flush the toilet. That's all I need. What frustrates me is that in the CCNRs of Upper Whitmore, it states that it is seasonal, that it can only be used 180 days a year. That's not happening and it frustrates me that there are people up there. We have a website and people will go on this website and say, oh, I just bought this land. I'm so excited. Orders are ready to get your mail. And I commented and said, what are we talking about getting mail? This is a seasonal home. And I was put in my place by the HOA board. So that frustrates me that, that I feel like it needs to be enforced and I live there, but I think it needs to be enforced because it is, was not intended for that use. Um, I think that's all, just that my, we have a fire suppressant system that we can't run because we don't have water. We're, we're shut down. I have a half a roof and I have no windows and winter's coming on. I need the permit to get this finished and closed off for the winter. And my complaint has nothing to do with water, but I need to get this home closed up for the winter. Thank you.
And I think this will be the last one.
Just briefly, I may have misunderstood the agenda. Is the zone text amendment on the agenda today? I'm the applicant in that amendment, but.
The only thing on the agenda today is the, is the water issue. So the zone application is not on the agenda today.
I'll wait to speak when it's my turn then. Thanks.
So I do have one question, Bryce, not for you, sorry, for Bryce. You know, when we brought this up on the agenda, I had specifically asked if there were people that were waiting on a permit. Um, and I had concern, actually, I didn't know about, about your home, but I had specifically asked, is there anyone waiting for a permit? And you said, yes, there was one. And I said, I worry that they're not going to have a permit before the snow flies. So apparently I was right. What are we doing to make sure that this is not being held up because we do have a permit waiting? I mean, this is sitting on our agenda. We're missing a commissioner. We're going to look to vote on it next week, but we've got people who need a permit.
Yeah. And so we spoke with the attorney's office about this. There's, there's two components to the proposal, as I described, if you're inside Hubble Creek and outside Hubble Creek Canyon. The outside ones, we've had permits for those also and we've had them sign the disclaimer because the way the proposal is currently constituted, that is all that would be required if you're outside of it. If you're inside of it and it gets passed, you, you have to also have an engineer statement to attest to your water rights. And as I understand, the underlying water rights associated with the development to which this permit is located, they have an issue and potentially are subject to be shutting off. And so in that situation, we're uncomfortable releasing the permit when there's a potential, if it's, that version's approved next week or whenever, that they are then going forward sinking a bunch of money into, uh, further money into their dwelling with the reality of, of there's going to be potential water being shut off. So you can see the dilemma. It's a difficult situation.
Does the permit touch the plumbing?
I believe so. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the will, the will serve letter represents that the, the water companies can provide them with, with the water. The, the underlying water rights are what the, the issue is.
Right. But see, we don't control water rights. The state does, right?
I understand.
The homes like 20 years old that we're remodeling has had water the whole time.
Right. But the state is restricting, the state is, the state is looking at restricting water. So we can't control whether or not the state restricts the water. I don't see why we can't let them close up their home.
Because the pending ordinance contemplates that we have to have this, this statement from an engineer prior to releasing a permit.
I understand that, but we haven't passed that ordinance yet.
Right. But state law requires that once it's pending, you can't act on an application until that's been completed.
So we can't complete that until this agenda item is passed.
So Rob Moore, county attorney's office. Uh, our county land use ordinance prohibits us from issuing a permit when we have a pending ordinance that would affect this property. So that's why it's being held. Now, to be frank with you, this has been pending five months and once it hits six months by state law, we would have to issue it. So, so within the next 30 days, it, it's going to be issued one way or the other. When I say issue one way or the other, I mean that they'll be eligible because the pending ordinance will be resolved, you'll have approved it, or it'll timeout and then they'll be able to apply and, and get their approval. Now, uh, they still have to meet the requirements of the pending ordinance if you guys do approve it within the next 30 days. Cause that's about how much time we have left. Um, a, as was mentioned, it was referred to the planning commission in April and by state law, you have, we have 180 days to act on that. And that's where we are right now. We're, we're close to the 180 days. We're pushing up against it. So by, in October, we need to finish this up so that we can issue permits like this. As you recall, it's a disclaimer. It's not, we're not taking anybody's water. All we're doing is putting them on notice that the state may shut off their water. And that includes existing homes with people living in them right now.
Right, right. So if they sign the disclaimer, they can have the permit?
No, not at Hubble Creek because they, they have to have to sign this. Our ordinance prohibits them from receiving, with a pending ordinance, from receiving approval until the ordinance works its course or by state law until the 180 days has come.
Yeah. What I'm feeling is.
So there's the additional requirement to have that engineered study to verify that they in fact do have a water, a reliable source of water.
Assuming you approve that, yes.
Right. So that's in addition to the, to the, to the acknowledgement and the waiver, they have to have this additional study performed because they are up in the canyon. That's a part of the ordinance, pending ordinance.
And the state is to verify the water's available.
Right. And that's, that's why they can't just go ahead simply by signing an acknowledgement of the risk. They would also have to have this study.
Cause the concern has been that the water level has been dropping and, and the engineers trying to.
And does our, does our ordinance not account for existing homes?
Our ordinance only accounts for those that are coming for permits.
So it doesn't matter if it's existing homes?
So, so we, we can't go into an existing home that is not, nothing's changing in their home and require them to sign off on this and require a study. We, we can't do that. But someone who comes in and requests a permit or something of that nature, that's what our ordinance attacks. As we talked about this before, we really, we're, we're trying to fix the problem going forward, but honestly, we don't have the ability to go back.
So here's my question. What if they wanted a permit to build a garage that doesn't even have a faucet?
It's not, it's not. This is Bryce. The way the proposal is written, it's only required for a permit that utilizes a domestic water source. So that would not be subject to this requirement. The way the proposal is written, it says any structure, including an addition to an existing structure that utilizes a water source. But in that scenario you just described, a detached garage without a, without a water hookup. It would not require.
So to just change to, to refurbish a home, then it, it shouldn't be affecting an existing water source. It's just changing walls, layout, um, new window.
The current proposal is written, it says any permit for a structure that utilizes a domestic water source. This, this, this structure is still utilizing.
I wonder if we should use, use the phrase for new domestic water source.
That's a potential, well, I don't know about domestic source, but you could potentially say any new dwelling. The concern here is.
Not any new dwelling. I was just thinking instead of using water source, simply say new water source. So you have to put a new tap.
I, I think that the, that source is referring to the underlying water right that supplies the system that provides water to that house.
Cause when we were talking about this, in my thought, my head, I was thinking that this would not affect, um, existing, uh, water usage, only future additional water usage.
That's what I was thinking too.
The representatives from the state said they're potentially going to shut off water to existing residences up there.
Right. And I understand that, but that's a state issue. That's not a county issue.
And I think the concern here we're trying to capture is if that's the case, you know, the tenant.
Well, if that's the case, are we requiring that before we'll record a, before we'll record a property for anyone in that canyon, we make them sign that same paper?
What's that?
Does this ordinance say that for any person who purchases property, even if it's an existing home in that canyon, we make them sign a waiver saying that they may lose their water rights before we'll record their property?
No, it's only tied to the building permit process. That's all we have control over. And, and what we're trying to prevent here is someone putting a $200,000 addition onto a house that potentially could be turned off next year.
Right.
You know, I, I think they want to be aware of that.
But we're looking at is if it's an addition that doesn't require, um, uh, other water sources to be added to it. And in case of like adding a window or replacing a, a wall of an existing structure and there's no changes to the actual tap system.
Swapping out a bathtub doesn't mean you added a bathtub. It just means you swapped out a bathtub.
But it's, it's not tied to additional water usage at all. Just the mere fact that you have a home and a connection and are using water, that water source may disappear next year.
Right. And if you buy a new house and you don't change anything, that water source may disappear next year.
That's right. The difference here is they've come to the county and requested a permit from Utah County.
We record their property at the county too.
Well, we have control over the burdened building permit. We don't have that control over the recording.
Yeah. Because I, I think what we're trying to do is not require this exception when you just put a porch on or a garage for, as many just pointed out, or something that's not affecting the, the existing water, the piping structure of the house. The water flow has not changed. Uh, they're just making aesthetics or they're making substantial changes, but there's no changes to number of tubs, toilets, faucets.
See, my big issue right now is the fact that we have somebody who started this process. When they started this process, we did not have this pending ordinance.
That's not true.
We did.
We had the pending ordinance first. That's correct.
Their, their application was submitted, I believe, the end of August.
Had it been started before, the pending ordinance wouldn't apply to them. If it started after April, after the pending ordinance, it applies to anyone who starts an application after the pending ordinance. Their application came after, which is why it applies. And look, to be frank with you, um, next week, we're, we're hoping you'll continue till next week. We'll have this discussion, like some more. Um, it went to the planning commission. They, they made revisions to this and it came back at 7:00 on recommending approval. They know about this problem too. Um, they, we discussed remodels at the planning commission and they recommended that it applied to this very situation we're talking about. So that, that's, that's why we're here. Unfortunately, you know, circumstances required to can be where we're at, but it's shortly be resolved, I think, uh, within the next 30 days.
Yeah. I'm just worried about the onset of, uh, change of weather and all of that affecting the home.
I think, uh, Mr. Bryce, again, I think, uh, well, I know the state code allows the commission to modify the proposed recommendation from the client.
And maybe grandfather certain things so that it takes into account, uh, things that we have conceptualized, but may not put on paper.
I think that's certainly an option for the commission.
I think we should look at that. I'll move to continue this item, um, until.
One week.
One week until our next.
He may not be here, but maybe we could talk it through anyway.
We can discuss it beforehand.
And maybe you can, if you're able to tap in through Zoom or something.
Yeah, I'm going to try. I'm going to try. It depends on if I'm on an airplane or not, but.
I, I, just one more thing to say, and I think you already kind of mentioned it, weather is a serious concern and 30 days is a, is an eternity for us at this point, especially right now and, and you know, where we're at in the year. And, um.
Yeah, I'm watching the weather drop.
I also didn't hear one thing from the, from the department about the fact, about the fact that it doesn't, the building doesn't use more water and they keep bringing the, the fact that we may lose our water in, in their argument. That's their argument basis, but we're not any more at risk than any of these other people up there, according to what you just said.
Right.
So that's irrelevant, right? It's irrelevant and I just, we just don't understand why they're digging their heels in so bad over this. It, it just punishes us.
Yeah. They're responding to the planning commission, which is a separate body from us, but we have some latitude. So that's what we're looking, I'm going to look at the language and make sure that it fits the reality.
We'll look at the language. We'll see what we can do.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'll continue this one week. That would be September, September 29th.
Yeah.
Carol Ferguson, Hubble Creek Canyon. Um, I'm sorry to come up again, but as Bryce Armstrong and Mr. Moore were speaking, it brought up some other thoughts to my mind. I appreciate the fact that Bryce Armstrong brought up the, um, overallocation of water. The water, we have been told that the water in Hubble Creek Canyon is more than 100% oversubscribed. And one reason we're, have this problem, homeowners have the problem now is because it appears from my working with the county, that the county, when people have applied to build, the county has checked on the water quality. They did not check and verify there was the water quantity available. So it's very important to check and take the measures that the county is now putting in place to verify that those people actually have water instead of just taking the willing to serve letter and thinking that a willing to serve letter does indeed mean that you have the quantity of water that is needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think.
I understand about priority. I understand that it is countywide and that it's statewide really, and that it's Hubble Creek wide. So everyone will be affected by that. I understand the issue that's in place for these people. What I don't understand is that the, the planning, um, planning commission recommended a new, um, structure. Sorry, that planning commission meeting ran until 11 plus and I get up at four. My mind is not here, but I do want to make this point. Um, Dave, do you have to have a building permit if you are, um, building or if you are being allowed a dude ranch, a reception center, a campground? Is the controlling factor for the county whether or not you have to have a permit rather than traffic up and down a dead end road or maybe both?
We couldn't respond to that until we actually had an application. If we have an application, we would review and determine what we've needed.
The application is, the application has been made and it was approved. The applicant spoke last night to the planning commission. I will come and ask the question when there aren't so many people who need to also speak. Thank you.
I will have to go ahead and close comments for that agenda item and, and make a motion to continue this.
Yep.
One week, then July 29th.
Yep. All right. Okay. My motion is made.
And I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it passes 2-0. Um, we have works session item and I propose that we continue that until Commissioner Lee's event back. Um, and this is something maybe you should be here for as well.
Yeah. I would like to be here for this one as well.
So continue this until October 6th, I think it is.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to continue the work session item until October 6th.
And I can second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes 2-0. This continues to October 6th, that work session. We'll now move to public comments. Given the number, and I'm glad you're here, may I ask if you have a common topic that you want to touch on? Raise your hand. Need to have a feel for how many we have.
How many people want to, want to make a comment? Okay.
How many want to make a comment about the, uh, an audit? Voting audit.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's count.
Alice, how many are on Zoom or do we have any in the health justice building conference room?
One on Zoom.
And no one's in the other building. Are there any in the hall?
About 20.
There's one or two coming in.
This has one quick comment before all the rest of them.
Perfect. Yeah.
About something simple.
If you have a comment other than the audit, would you raise your hand? So there's two that I see. Anyone on the Zoom, Alice, that wants to make something besides an audit?
Um, no, just the audits.
Okay. So we have two for something besides the audit. So what we'll do is we'll go ahead and give two minutes for each of those individuals and then we will move into a, a public comment on the voting audit. If that's what I'm interpreting this for, please, when you come up, state your name and where you're from.
Uh, hello, my name is Julio Gonzalez and I am opening a restaurant in the city of Provo and I was invited to come here to talk with you guys about the fact that we understand that there's several million dollars, um, that is, that is. that the city has currently and is sitting on to be utilized towards grants for small businesses. And they've been sitting on this money for quite some time. And I'm here to kind of get start, get the ball rolling, because I've got 30 people that are opening businesses that need assistance. And I can bring them next week. And I was told to come here to be able to talk to you a little bit about when is any of that money going to be released? Because I was told, well, at some point, we'll make a decision. And it's been forever in a day, and no decision is ever made.
Who did you speak to?
I forgot the gentleman's name, but he's here. I don't know if he remembers talking to me. He told me he would be here.
This is Bryce, the one of the.
Could be.
Fellow with a blue shirt and tie.
Could be. So am I far off in making the statement that there's millions of dollars that the city has?
There are, there are dollars that the federal government is issuing to states and counties and cities, yes. How those dollars are being used is decided at each of those levels. At the county, they're trying to look at, do we use it at all? And if we do, what long-term, one-time expenses do we need to cover that we can avoid otherwise increasing taxes? Because if we give it back to federal government, they will then give it to someone else to use it. And we understand that. So we are trying to look at large projects that would cost very, very high amounts. But we're not looking at new businesses at this point, anyway.
So you've had the funds for quite some time, right?
We've had it for a little while, yeah.
Okay. So it's not, because you just said that you're about to receive some funds, but you've had them.
I apologize, but yes, they've, what I meant by that is that all the state, cities, and counties, I don't know if everyone's received it or not, but yes.
So the fact that I was told, sorry to interrupt. So the fact that I was told that some of that money will be used for grants for small businesses, that was an incorrect statement.
Not from the county perspective. There may be other funds, but I'm not aware of them right now.
Okay. All right.
Who, who would I turn to to ask him to go see if there's county-level grants for small businesses? I'm not familiar.
Any of the grants that we ran, we ran through MAG. Through MAG, Mountain and Association of Governments and the COG, the Council of Governments. They were the ones who ran any of the grants.
So ran, meaning the funds are over with?
Yeah, so last year, they ran two rounds of grants for small businesses through MAG and through COG, and that was done in 2020. I haven't heard of any in 2021 that have come up, but there were two rounds in 2020. Now, that doesn't mean that there won't be some in the future, but if there will, if there are, they would be advertised.
Lisa, would you give him a contact person and phone number? Yeah, just take a minute.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. And good luck on your restaurant.
Yeah, thanks.
Absolutely. I'm excited to hear more about it. I love food.
And to reinforce what I had mentioned earlier, this will keep a public comments to two minutes since there's going to be 3,000 wanting to speak, which you're welcome to speak.
My name is Charles Ray Best. I live in Spanish Fork. Can I have some papers for you? I don't know if it's what happened to you or wherever you look at.
Yeah.
My own property in Utah County in Palmyra. My reason for coming today is a request for you to reclaim or vacate a small portion of my land, which was deeded to the county in 1933 and 1934. And Hal Roberts is here. He has the other section of it, too. This was for a road that was built on the, it has on the green where I've got it marked. It was for a road that was built that went across Spanish Fork River into Lake Shore from Palmyra in 1954. For when the flood hit, it took that bridge out in the road. So it's moved to 4,400 south, which is about a mile and a half or two miles from there. And since then, we've been paying taxes, running it, farming it. When my grandpa bought it from Hans Odison, it was the Aitkins that deeded it to you. And we didn't know that when my grandpa bought it. And then my dad bought it from my grandpa, and then it was given to me in his will. All this done, was done without a survey. So back then, they went by fences and that back in there. And so, anyway, the survey was done because I'm getting ready to sell my ground. And survey was done, and I can't sell that ground until I have a clear title. So I'm requesting from you a quick claim deed so that I can have that property back and Hal can get his back so that we can sell that. Like I said, it shows it there in that, in that document there. And that's what I came today for, to see if I could get a quick claim done as quick as I can. I've got it under contract right now. And so the quicker the better so that I can get that. We've emailed this to Richard Nelson. He's aware of it. And he told me to come here and tell you that, so.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so you're saying in 1933 or '34, the road was taken, the area was taken to build a road for a bridge?
Uh huh.
And then in 1953 or '54, there was a flood that destroyed that bridge, and the road has not been rebuilt and the bridge was moved?
No. And now if you look closely, I've got a cement ditch going right down that parcel.
Okay.
That belongs to you, because nobody knew it belonged to you at that time.
So you've, you've been actively, I guess, farming it, running it? Farming it, working that land since, your family has at least since 1953?
Yeah, well, since 1961, we bought it.
Okay.
So.
Commissioners, just so you know, I am familiar with this request. We asked him to put it in writing. I think he's done that for you. It's not a quick process. I hate to tell you that, sir. We would have to go through a public process to vacate a road because it is, shows the road. And that does require four weeks of notice for that process. And then we would have a public hearing, and then you could adopt an ordinance vacating that road. And then you can consider divesting the county of that road, that property, if you decided to do that. So I'm guessing you're probably looking at 60 days for that process to play out?
Even where there's no public alive that even knows there was a road there?
It's because it's a road that shows on our roadmaps. And it's, yeah, by state law, we're required to, required to vacate that road through a public process, a public hearing process. And by state law, we're required to give four weeks of notice, four notices for four weeks in a row. So one, two, three, four. Yeah.
So maybe what we could do is you could follow up with his office and work that out.
What I would have to do is I'll put something on your agenda for next week to start that process.
Yeah, let's get this process started as quickly as possible for him. Thank you.
Invite, invite him as well, so.
I won't be around next week, but I'd be able to contact you maybe.
Okay, sure. I'm Robert Moore. Yeah, you talk to Richard, and he can get ahold of me, so.
Okay. So you're talking like four weeks longer?
Next week, we'd just be setting a public hearing. And then we would have to notice up that public hearing. But yeah, so on the agenda next week would be a request to set a public hearing to consider vacating this road you're talking about.
Yeah, we can probably get you a timeline to show the different check marks we have to mark. And we can, and then you can make sure that we're shepherding our way through that as quickly as possible.
Okay, so if I'm under contract, then I'll probably lose that contract.
I would just let them know that, yeah, it's going to take a little longer. If they need something from the county to verify that that's the case, we can show them the statute. Yeah, not a problem.
So what do you say, about 60, 90 days then roughly?
I'm hoping 60 days. Because if we put on the agenda, we'll put up as quick as possible. We'll have to, again, notice it up. And so hopefully, 60 days should cover it, I think.
And you can participate if you're not in town. Just go, there's on the agenda, they have a Zoom link and/or a phone number. You can participate remotely if you care to.
I'll actually be in the mountains. I won't be in there. I have a special hunt that week, so I'll be in the mountains, so.
That's more important anyway, right?
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other, other comments? All right. What we'll do is that we will take a very brief recess for five minutes and then come back, and we'll go ahead and get started on that.
On the public comment?
Yes, yes.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, we'll do a five.
I'm surprised you guys aren't making Paul sit here for this one.
All right, this is a sound check. Ben Vanoy, are you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Commissioner.
Okay, we can hear another member of our Civil Division then. Okay. Okay, this, this section is to hear, I think principally for voting audits. And if there's other topics that, other than the voting audit, would you raise your hand? So it's just this. What we'll do is that we can't respond to everything because this is a public comment. You're going to make your, your thoughts known and suggestions known. If you have a question, I might defer you to someone else to get an answer. But we want to hear from you. And so we'll limit this. Alice, is there a clock? Oh, that's because I see it edge on. I don't see, actually see it.
I see it on the screen.
I see it on the screen. Yeah, I can't say I don't see it on the screen. So we will limit it to two minutes, and I think there will be quite a few of you that want to say something, so we'll let that happen. If it gets to be extremely long, then we might call another recess and reconvene. But we'll see how the things go from that point, from this point forward. So with that, other than that, that would just simply open it for public comment.
And just before you say your comment, will you just say your name and where you're from, so we can put that in the records?
My name is Lyndon Cook. I'm a retired professor of history at UBU. I live in Provo.
Thank you.
I'm here not as a representative of these folks, but I think we have a similar concern. And that is about the 2020 election and about some mischief that may have occurred in Utah County. We're not, I'm not here to accuse anyone, but, and I don't have any evidence of any mischief. But I have reasonable suspicions of mischief in Utah County. In 20, in 2008, Obama got 29,000 votes in this county. In 2012, he got 17,000 in this county. In 2016, Hillary Clinton got 28,000 votes in this county. And in 2020, Joe Biden, who was probably the weakest candidate the Democrats have ever put forward, got 76,000 votes in Utah County. Typically, 3,000 people vote for a third party candidate in Utah County. In the 2020 election, 20,000 people voted for a third party candidate. I don't, I don't believe this happened. I don't think that those are right numbers. I believe those are phantom votes. And what I'm in favor of is an audit, how that's.
And in the next, as people make comments, please don't interrupt. Let them finish their thought. Appreciate that. Thank you.
We know elsewhere in this country that canvassing has been accomplished. We know that through that canvassing, those phantom votes have been found. We also know there's a piece of software known as Electronic Data Analyzer. It'll take every voter in Utah County, and it will segregate them and show where they live. And it will indicate if there's more than one person that's registered for a, or multiple people registered for a single address. For example, in Wisconsin, 1,800 people registered to vote from a single address. So we'd like to find that out. Well, probably, I'm not competent, and some others might be here to look at the machines. I, I'm informed that the ES and S machine is used in Utah County. Is that correct? Okay, someone needs to look at that machine, someone who's competent to look at it. Take a digital image of every page. Have the machines in Utah County been updated by the, by technicians other than county people? That would be a question. If they have, we'd like to know it. And if they haven't, we'd like to have them, in either case, be, be examined. So I'm concerned about a canvas. I'm interested in having the voter database be.
I'm sorry, we need to move to the next one. Sorry. That was me. Sorry, right here. We went way past the two minutes. Yeah, we just need to move to the next one. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mark Allen from.
Whoops, just one second. Sorry about that.
Mark Allen from Protect and Preserve American Fort Canyon. I appreciate what you Commissioners are willing to do for the public. And what I'm going to say, I mean with all due respect, we're here to talk about audits. We have wasted 12,000 citizens' minutes by holding public comments till the other business has been done. If that's any indication of how we're running our county, I would just suggest maybe you think about putting the public comments like Nathan and Tanner did when we had the Brightwell Falls issue, when we had the American Fork issue. The majority of us here have been here for a collective purpose. And it's not to diminish the importance of the other people's issues. But for us to have to sit through two hours so that we could have time to make a one-minute comment, I think is a misuse of public time and public trust. So with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Milo Ott. I live in Orem, Utah. I'm an international logistics manager, and I'm here taking a little time off work. And I need to have my say before I have to go back to work. So first of all, I want, I want to thank you for at least letting us speak about this issue. I came, I moved from Northern California about two years ago. And my vote never counted in Northern California. And it is a, you know, one-party state. So moving here, I thought, you know, hey, I have a chance here to finally have, you know, a free and fair election. And I watched the elections on, on presidential election that night on TV. And I'm not a hound dog, but it stunk to high heaven. I mean, I could see that just watching it. And, and so I've since, of course, found all of the other hundreds, thousands of people who've come out under perjury, under penalty of perjury, and said how, what kind of fraud there was going on in some of these other states. Well, I have no doubts that that also would apply to this state. And we can only go from the bottom up. We can only start from the level that we're at right here. So if we start here and we find fraud, then we can expand it throughout the whole state. Because we need to have free and fair elections. Otherwise, we do not have a free republic. And we, once we lose our freedom, we can't get it back. So I'm all for an audit, a complete and thorough audit. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We have one person, I think, on Zoom. Give that person a chance to say something if we can.
Oh, great. Thank you. We have a Mike. I think it's Whiting. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your, your comment.
Yeah, this is Mike Whiting from Orem. And I just wanted to say, I saw that there is going to be a lot of people coming to comment on, on, on the audit. And I figure that I'm probably in the minority here, that I oppose the audit. I don't think we need to spend $9 million or whatever it's going to be to confirm that Utah County is still a one-party Republican county. So that's my thoughts. It would make no sense whatsoever to, for someone trying to commit fraud in Utah to, to try and do it here and fail so miserably at it. Trump still won by 66% or whatever it is. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So Aaron Davidson from Lyndon, Utah. I'm actually one of the three that were here that represent the organization People's Rights, who represent about just under 700 residents in Utah County. And I do support, I actually thank you, Amelia, for actually having us come. So thank you for the invitation and for considering it. And I do call for an audit, but I, since it is a one-party system, I'd actually like to call for an audit of the Republican primaries. That's where I think for us, it's more important to do the audit, to find out if the candidate that we, that people really wanted actually represented us in the, the final election. So that's what I would like to do. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I've introduced myself. I'm Andrew Howard from Provo.
Hi, Andrew.
Hi, how are you? I was at the same meeting you were, and thank you for coming, and thank you for your service, Colonel. Aside of being a veteran, I've been a retired community banker. I was a banker for 26 years here in the community. And if we counted votes like dollars at the bank, we would have been shut down years ago. I know what an audit is, and what you do is not an audit. We have backup systems of, of our data, daily, not weekly. So all the data in those machines should be backed up before and after the election to preserve their integrity. One of the things I learned about the Integrity Open House is that we do not do canvassing. Where we check, we do it by Google and the post office, which, hello, that, there's a problem there. You need to have a real auditor go out and check the voters to see if they're who they say they are. The other thing that's disturbing is there's no independent auditor. As a bank, we got audited by the feds. We got audited by the state, and then we had to pay for our own auditors. And those people were switched around often so that we didn't get too comfortable with them. And they all had to match. And if they didn't match, we were held to account. There needs to be accountability, and we don't have accountability. And, you know, Colonel, I believe that the paper vote that we saw in Iraq with the purple finger was more transparent and more accurate than all the whiz-bang presentations we got by ESS and Dominion and Smartmatic. This is a problem, and we're going to lose our country if we don't nail this down now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Thomas. I'm here with Utah Freedom Coalition. And mostly for the crowd, if you want to go to auditutah.org, you'll find petitions and other ways to be civically engaged in this movement. So my comment is that there have been multiple nationwide people who have analyzed the data from Utah, publicly available, not forensic. There is so much systemic fraud. It's widespread. It goes back for years and years. That could be put in your hands today for you to evaluate and decide if you think there's nothing. The man that called in and said that this is just about 2020 is wrong. There's obvious phantom voting. There's canvassing issues, things that will layer and move forward. This isn't about who won and who didn't win. It's about the integrity of our elections, the overwhelming evidence that exists right now despite an outcome, and the mood in the country that wants to know that we're not going to turn into the states we don't live in, who are already at the bottom of this barrel with where it goes. So a forensic audit, I think the estimate was $53 a person. I think that is a small price to pay, to know that our elections are free and fair. I think it's a fee that most Utahns would pay without hesitation. So we would like the opportunity to let you know that the public will stand behind you against the pressure that will come from the state to not do a forensic audit. We will stand behind those who stick their necks out. We will not make you do it alone. We're not a small group, and the group is growing by the minute. So that is my message today. You're not alone. We're not asking you to do anything. We're not willing to back you up in public with, at the polls, in the press. And just to give the citizens of Utah the chance to see our good leaders, we know you're good leaders, lead without feeling like you're alone when you do it. So that's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jim Warner from Saratoga Springs. So for me, it was a few months back, I actually got a tour of the tabulating facility by Josh. He actually spent over three hours with myself and a couple other folks, showing us the tabulation center and answering all of our questions, which I really appreciate. And I asked him if he would support an audit, and he said yes, because they have nothing to hide. And so ultimately, the only thing that the country or Utah County would have to lose, in my opinion, would be money. But really, that's money invested. And of all the things we spend money on, spending money on preserving our elections seems like the best place to put our money. And then if we find out nothing's wrong with the system, isn't that great? And that means Utah County is a model for the whole country. And if we find that some races are flipped, well, isn't that great? Because any politician who supports an audit, I guarantee you that people would support that politician, probably as long as they want to run an office. So to me, doing an audit, again, also doesn't have anything to do with the party that won. Because what if the people in our party are not the people we want elected? Ultimately, it's just about preserving the very bedrock of the country. And I think we all can support that, because not only does a compromised election system compromise the people, but it compromises the people in office. So for that reason, I support a full forensic audit, one that is similar to like what was done in Arizona. And if there's a price to pay for me as a citizen and taxes, I'll do that. And if it's fundraising that has to complement any government funds, I believe people would do that as well. So like was said earlier, you have our support.
Alice, are there any others on Zoom or calling in?
No.
Okay. Any others?
Hey, Tyson Zimmerman, newly in Alpine. Never been to one of these before, never gotten involved with any stuff like this before, so.
Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate the civic engagement. So congratulations on being here. Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I, the reason that I'm starting to get involved is because the lack of transparency that I see from government, not saying, not accusing anybody here, but from government on all levels, federal level, you know, on a local level, I don't think we get as much transparency as, as we could have. And also, I'm a software engineer, and so I have a lot of problems with ranked choice voting, just by the nature of what it is. So ranked choice voting leaves our vote up to a computer algorithm. A computer algorithm is only as good as those people who write it. Computer algorithms are only understood by a select few. Even for a seasoned programmer, it can take time to dig in and understand code that they didn't write. So basically, with ranked choice voting, and I would offer this for any electronic system, you are leaving election results, the bedrock of our country, as it was mentioned earlier, up to a select few. Okay? And the general population is not going to understand what's happening under the scenes, under the hood with, with these computer algorithms. So leaving these, for me, I'm, I support a full forensic audit because I don't trust our computer algorithms. I don't trust the people who I hear trying to defend those computer algorithms. And this, the bottom line, this creates a whole lot less transparency, not more transparency. And I think where we're at in our country today with all the division, we need a whole lot more transparency, not less. And, and for those reasons, I, I support the full forensic audit, as well as getting rid of any electronic voting system and going back to, to paper ballots. Last, it was, it was mentioned $9 million on the vote to, to, is what it would cost. Arizona spent, it spent $150,000. The rest was privately backed. It's been mentioned that the private citizens will help to support this. I personally would as well. Utah County is a lot smaller than, than what they did in Arizona, 2.1 million votes. They, they, and I think the total tabulation was around $6 million. So we'd be well under that, that amount. So thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Linda Cresswell. I am from Orem. And I, greatest, one of my greatest accomplishments is I'm the mother of that young man who just spoke. I just wanted to voice my opinion on the fact that when I looked online after voting, when I found out about all of the things that were happening in other states, and I said, this can't happen in Utah. And I looked online, and I found that my vote had not counted. And we had gone in person down to the megaplex theaters, and my vote was not counted. So I looked for my husband's vote. His vote as well was not counted. And so I know that something is going on. This is not a Republican issue. This is not a Democratic issue. This is something that I want to know, that my vote counts, and that this is a fair election. And, and it's not even just about who won the presidency. It's about our local leaders here. We need to know that the votes are correct for our local leaders as well. And I, because I don't think this is just a presidential issue. And, and there are many ways, and there are many organizations that are open to funding help for election, help for elections financially. So, and those, I, I've seen some of those online, and they're very willing to do that. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity of voicing my opinion and all of those who are here as well.
Lance Howard, Saratoga Springs. This is my first time ever, most time ever in a.
Thank you for coming.
Political atmosphere. It's not me. But Philip, it would be a huge disservice if I didn't say something today. I've got kids, parents, grandparents, grandkids that will have their own families down the road. And right now, I think we are at the point. We've got to understand all of the gaps in our voting system, all of them, and they all need addressed. Similar to, like in manufacturing, where you might have a FMEA or risk analysis, where you outline and identify all your, all your gaps in all your systems. And you brainstorm and think about what could possibly go wrong here. And you document it, and you score it based on how often that happens, and how severe it is, and how you detect it. And I think you might have some experience with that.
I do.
And, and a control plan. How do we, how do we monitor to ensure that things are in control still moving forward? Right now, for looking back and watching YouTube videos and news articles for the last 20 years, I'm not seeing a lot of fixes. I want to be part of the solution. I volunteer to do whatever I can to be part of that solution, but we got to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name is James Graff from Provo. I'm a graduate engineer and I'm a successful businessperson, so I come at that from two different directions. The evidence is overwhelming that it's time to verify these elections. A famous American president said, "Trust but verify." My trust is wearing thin. I suspect a lot of other people's wearing thin. And if we don't verify, there is no trust.
You know, for years and years, Carolyn Wright from Provo, for, we had a caucus system in this state, and people had faith in the caucus system. That's changed. Voting by mail, I've got to tell you, the first time I heard that talked about, I thought fraud with fraud. There are just so many ways to be able to do that in a fraudulent way. Amelia has talked to me about how, for instance, I've had several people during the last election call me and say, Carolyn, this is, this is odd. We had a son on a mission in here, and then he lived in this apartment, and then he got into college, and now he's living at home. And we got like six, you know, voter opportunities for him. Because these are very honest people, the kid only sent in one. Now, you've told me before that there are ways of making or catching that so that if someone, not as honest as they were, had sent in six votes from this one boy, you would have caught that. And that's something that needs to be known as well, because at least in my part of Provo, that's being talked about as well. Another family had a similar experience with a grandmother who had been living with one child, then in a care home, then with the other child, and then with the people who called me. They said, we've gotten all these, what do we do? So to me, there are three things we need to address as issues. And thank you for listening, and thank you to everyone who's here participating, including you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tamara Mullin. This is the first time that I've ever done this. In fact, this is the first commissioners' meeting I've ever been to, so bear with me. But I wanted to enhance what was said by the wonderful software engineer with regard to the algorithm. I attended the Dr. Frank event. It was a couple months ago in Utah. And I know Josh Daniels was also present there. He's, he's one of the leaders in the data analysis across the country. What he has analyzed and what he has found out is that there is an algorithm that was nefariously used to rig the election. In every state, he showed us examples. He showed us in Utah. What they used was the census, the last census data. And they built the algorithm based on that census data. And if you track the votes that were done, not only in Utah, but across the country, they track that census data 99% in most cases. That is just, there's something wrong. If it was no correlation, then it would be a negative one. If things were mixed bag, it would be zero. But to have close to one correlation is almost, is unheard of. And there is something wrong with our election systems. Also, when you look at who is funding the election systems, Dominion, Smartmatic, ESNS, it all goes back to the same people who have taken over governments across the country. Look what happened to Venezuela, for example. It used to be a free nation. It is no longer, because they used Smartmatic and Dominion to manipulate their elections and get in place who they wanted to get in place. We absolutely need a full forensic audit. The data is overwhelming. Thank you.
Paul Ewing Highland. Yeah, I agree. It's been a year almost since the election. I think, you know, this group represents, you know, only a small fraction of everybody who has this type of concern. And I think the thing that's most frustrating for me is, you know, there's this type of passion for some accountability for our election system. And yet, here we are a year later, and, you know, just like most of the rest of the country, you know, nothing is happening. And so I guess my question is, is it you three commissioners who are making the decision about if there's going to be an audit?
So according to state law, the only way we can open the boxes is with a judge's order or if with the state law changes. And so even if we voted to do the audit, we would either need a court order or we need our legislature to vote to allow us to do that.
Okay, so.
So it's like a two-step process.
Okay, so it sounds like it's not even within your control then to initiate an audit?
It, there's more discussion to that. And it's, it's just not there yet, so. I'm not promising one way or the other. I'm just simply saying that I don't have the connections to resolve that yet.
Okay. I guess I feel like, I mean, you guys are responsible for ultimately running the, you know, the elections within the county. Why is it that you guys don't have the ability to verify that they're, you know, they were run properly and that there was no funny business going on? I mean. I feel like, I feel like we need a concrete plan and a timeline for making this happen. I'm certain that there's a majority of people in this county that want to see it happen. And the numbers are indisputable as far as like, I mean, give me a break. Joe Biden getting 76,000 votes here in Utah County? Never, never. So I feel like we need to, we need to figure out what the path is to making this happen. We need to have a judge issue a ruling saying that you can open up the.
I can address your, I'm the county clerk, so I can address your questions. When you say an audit, do you, what do you mean, what do you mean by an audit? Do you mean a recount or do you mean an audit?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the only thing that will determine what actually happened here. We need a canvas. We need a machine evaluation and a forensic evaluation of the machines. And we need a forensic valuation.
In election administration or state law, every election is audited after the election. Every time.
I know, but the semantics that you use in that verbiage are just so.
That's why I'm asking you. I don't want to use semantics. I want to understand what you mean when you say audit.
Yeah, so risk-libening audit, you know, as defined by the election software companies, is just completely worthless. What we're talking about is what happened in Arizona, which is.
That was a full hand recount of every ballot in Maricopa County.
That's right. That's right. And a canvas. Okay, so I understand, we're going to have the machine analysis.
So I understand that what they're doing in Maricopa is more than a full recount. But what I'm trying to understand from you is what would you like to see the county do?
I think everybody wants to see the county perform a full forensic audit, which includes those who are paying.
And as, as already has been pointed out, as already has been pointed out, I've talked to a number of people before. It's not something we oppose. What I don't understand is what does that entail?
Right.
And I have a pen and a paper, and I'm going to list on the paper what you mean. It is hard to find out, because there is no term in election administration, full forensic audit.
That's right.
What Maricopa County is doing is a full hand recount of every paper ballot.
Okay, so you're right.
So that's why I want to understand, like specifically, what are we talking about?
That's right. I don't, I don't think anybody had ever anticipated the level of fraud.
And by the way, canvassing. I will pass this around for anybody who's here. You can sign up, and our office will give you a voter list for the voters on your street, and you can canvas your street. And we would be, we would love to help you to do that. And so I'm going to pass that around. I don't, I've got a pen, because I want to take notes from you.
That's probably inefficient. I mean, I guess it's a good start, but there are software systems that have been designed to facilitate.
And we've done some of that. We've actually taken the voter list and identified how many voters are in each household and looked at outliers. We've done some of that analysis.
Okay. And so I think that there are more advanced software systems that have been developed since the.
Sure, so I'm ready to write down, chapter and verse, what you are asking for.
Let's go ahead and bring this back up here. And this is supposed to be a comment period only.
It's confusing, Commissioner, because many, many people have reached out to our office and have asked for what they call a full forensic audit. And I'm here to tell you, I don't know what they mean when they say that.
I will give you, I will give you a specific definition of exactly what we're looking for.
Okay.
And that's helpful, because then we know.
That would be helpful. Because I don't, because when you say, will you do an audit? Well, we do an audit for every election. So what is it you, what does it you mean when you say an audit? What does it you mean when you say full forensic audit?
Let's do this.
We can't, we can't decide whether we can do any of the things you're asking for if we don't know what it is you're asking for. And once I know, we can cost that out. We can put that in our budget request. We can do that January when we get new money. If we, you know, we could do some of it now, perhaps. We already have plans, by the way, for a full cybersecurity review.
Okay.
So we're already planning to do many of the things that are.
Let's pause this for a second.
Okay. I appreciate that, though.
Let's do this. After this is finished, would you just go and make yourself available to provide?
It depends on how long this goes. I literally have a meeting at five, that I am the primary presenter.
We'll figure out a way to get together.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm not, and I am not trying to pander or be facetious. I am dead serious. I would like to know specifically what people want counties to do in the wake of the 2020 election.
I think we have some people.
Because I've heard a buzzword, full forensic audit.
Yes, yes.
And I'm here to tell you.
You're right.
There is no election manual that has a definition of what that is.
Right.
And we have defined those terms thus far are the software companies who are kind of causing the problems of first place. So I think that we can help with that.
I'll have to use this mallet. It's never been used before.
Sorry, am I running over? I see the 36 there, so I'm still going.
It's paused because of this, it's, this is a very, we froze time. It has stopped. But let's go do this. He has some ideas on how, what we could do locally. What we'll do is, we'll see where we are. He has, does have to leave in about 45 minutes. But what we could do is just continue this discussion. And if we don't, if we can have someone replace him, if this continues beyond, he could go out and give you some initial ideas on how to get started locally to verify concerns that we have in our local communities. Our precincts would be an ideal way to start.
That's right.
But, but what I wanted to do is keep this as a public comment session, not a back-and-forth dialogue.
And I appreciate the comments, but I just feel like there's been a lot of talking, and people are animated and excited, but it's like nothing ever gets done.
There's just concerns.
Yeah.
There's very, very.
So, and there, so there's a group of about 3,500 people who are as passionate as I am about this and have, you know, time and energy that are willing to, you know, kind of help make this happen.
Let's finalize your comments first, and then we'll continue on with this.
I mean, that's about it. I just am looking for a specific plan to how to make it happen. Now that I understand that you guys don't actually control it, then I guess we have to formulate a plan for making it happen if it involves getting some judge somewhere. Is it a county judge? Is it a state judge?
I think all of these comments are going to be about these items. So let me just address a couple of these things. Okay, so, so the reason I ask what you want is because let's say what you want is what Maricopa County is doing. What Maricopa County is doing is they are cracking open the archive boxes within which are the retained paper ballots from the 2020 election. Literally, state law prohibits us from doing that. So under Utah state law, it says that ballots are essentially archived, and then they are destroyed on their destruction schedule. Specifically, it says, without opening or inspecting. So to your point, we would either need the legislature to change that law, or we would need a judge to override that, which would then open the, open the opportunity to do a full hand recount. That's, I know at least one element of what people want. They want us to open all the boxes, have a full recount of all the paper ballots. So that's one example of a legal hurdle in Utah that exists to doing that, right?
We're not opposed to doing that. We just need, yeah, we're not opposed to doing that. We just need either the state law to be changed or a judge's order.
I get it. Doesn't it seem silly, though, that we'll, we'll store those ballots for 22 months, and yet we can't open and look at them? What's the point?
Well, the point is, the point isn't, it's a fair question, right? The point is that they don't ever get open. The point is that if there is a question, they could be opened. But they have to be opened under the direction of a court or some change in the law.
Appropriately. I get it. Okay.
I mean, I can't do it. Josh Daniels, the county clerk, cannot go to the archive center, open and recount the ballots. I'm literally legally barred from doing that.
I get it. I'm sure we can figure out a way to make it happen.
And then there's a cost to that. And that's where we come in, is the cost of that, right? There's a cost to that. So then he would need to come and ask for additional money for that. And we would either need to raise the money, we would have to get the money, or the state could allocate the money. So the money is one part of it. So getting the law changed is part of it. Finding the funding is part of it. And then, and then the logistics of it. Now, some of the things that you're going to ask, we can do. So if we have a list, like Josh is saying, if we have a list of everything, there are some things that are going to be in our control there that we could actually just start doing. There are some things in that list that it's, that it doesn't take a law change. It just takes budget, in which case that Josh could then make a request to the commission for that budget. And then there are some things that we're going to need either a law changer. So it's like, if you give us 25 things, we want to start checking off as many of those as we can.
Okay, that's great.
But then we, and then we can tell you what, what the roadblocks are to the other ones, and you can help us with those.
Okay, so I, I mean, it sounds like you guys are ready and willing. You just have been, lack the direction to make things happen. Okay, so just before I finish up here, you know, having heard some of the statistical analysis of the election, I mean, the sniff test, doesn't, doesn't it seem like something funny is going on here? I mean, Joe Biden getting 76,000 votes when, you know, the year before Hillary Clinton got 29,000? I mean, what do you think?
You could, I've got some of that data you could actually come look at. I don't, if I could present on the screen, I would show you.
Yeah.
What I have over time, I've got this graph. Now, I'll post this on our website, or I could email it to you if you give me an email address. I've got it on a data wrapper. But basically, it shows populations since 2000, change over time. Shows registered voter population, change over time. Shows presidential votes each presidential year, both Republican.
Seth Keschel's data, or is it some other?
Well, it would be basically the same data, because he just pulled it right off of the election results.
And I don't know if you guys know that Seth and Josh have actually talked several times.
Okay, great.
So when you see the data in context, you'll see the trends. And you can tell me, you know, if this looks out of whack. But like, a big response to the earlier comment about the data. So in the 2020 election, in Utah County specifically, I didn't run this for the whole state, there were 209,000 votes cast for the Republican governor candidate. So that's Spencer Cox, 209,000. In the presidential election, there were only 193 Republican votes cast for Donald Trump, the presidential Republican candidate. So what that shows from a kind of political analytical sense is that Trump lost 23,500 Republican voters. Voters who voted for the Republican candidate for governor, but did not vote for the Republican candidate for president.
Assuming that your total tally numbers are, aren't flawed.
Correct, correct. But, but what I'm saying is that like, a political analyst would say, well, okay, why was that? You know, why did Spencer Cox appeal to Republicans? Or did the Democrat candidate not appeal for governor? I mean, there's different political analyses. But you can see at least over time the trend, and you tell me if it looks out of whack.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think that it's hard to base, you know, meaningful analysis on numbers that are likely flawed to begin with.
Let's do this. Josh, would you add that data on the clerk auditor's website? And then add a list of things that are available to the county to do? And then provide a mechanism.
Yeah, I'll give my email. For those that want to share some of the information about kind of what it is specifically you want to see done, it's J O S H, Josh, and then D as in Daniels, at utahcounty.gov, G O V.
Are you getting ready to blow up?
Josh D at utahcounty.gov.
We're going to get blown up now.
Yeah, I'll have to do a filter.
We will have a lot of emails. But what I want to do is bring this back up here and have a public comment. And then for detailed references, he will take the notes and then go back and add these things to the website so we can then follow up separately. But I want to give as much as public opportunity to speak your mind as possible this evening.
Okay, Josh, when can, when can I get with you to give you that definition? Because I've, I've got it pretty well mapped out.
Yeah, I would love to meet with you, because I mean, a lot of people have said, I want this thing, and then they, they don't exactly know. It sounds like you've done a lot of research. I'd love to sit down with you.
You know who can get with it? The guy at the back with the white shirt. Chris, can you raise your hand? He knows Josh's schedule. He could get you an appointment. He's got Josh's schedule.
Scheduled, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's one of the most useful and shortest two minutes I've ever seen.
He's still at 36 seconds.
I know that.
Hi, my name is Amanda Miller.
Hi, my name is Amanda Miller. I'm just going to try to think this quick. Sir, you say you don't know what a forensic audit is. Full forensic audit, you could have said that in 2019, 2018 maybe. It is a new thing. It's happening in Arizona. Just check it out. They have the steps for you. You're acting like it's impossible to understand what it is when it's fully available to you as an adult.
Amanda.
Who can get on the internet and check it out?
Amanda, Amanda?
Yes.
If you address-
Oh, yes, thank you. Well, this is the county clerk, and so they always tell us to talk to the county clerk-
Yeah.
Because they're the ones running our audit, our elections, so that's why I'm specifically speaking to him.
That's fine. Just address up here, that's fine.
I apologize. Also, with canvassing, so you guys canvass using Google Images. No one is actually on the ground canvassing who's in these homes voting, apparently. So we are claiming that there's phantom voters. There's been nothing that Josh has done to make me feel like phantom voters don't exist still. He says they canvass using photos. Let's Go Canvas on Foot, which is what we are doing.
Since your comment at the town hall, I won't take your time.
Please don't interrupt me. So since we're Utah E I, UtahElectionIntegrity.org, we already have canvassing started. We have, already have canvassing training. Us citizens are ahead of our government right now when it comes to wanting a full forensic audit, and acting like we don't know how to do it. Also, mail-in ballots need to go. Absolutely need to go for us to have secure elections. So along with starting an audit, a full forensic audit, Amelia and Josh have pushed mail-in ballots for our state for a few years now. This is not new, but everyone is getting a mail-in ballot, and it just opens up the floor for fraud. We all know that. So I don't understand why mail-in ballots equals a secure election, because it never has and never will. We also don't want our elections ran further away. Like, they're still going to be ran at a state level. Right now, they're ran at a county level. I don't think we're very satisfied with how that's running. Let's get it back down to the municipality levels, like cities and towns running it, precinct level. That's how you get a secure election, not just the forensic audit, that we're acting like we don't know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I feel compelled to defend my honor. I feel compelled to defend my honor. A week or two ago, we had a transparency town hall, where we talked about kind of what we do in elections, and there was this commentary about sort of canvassing, basically going door to door to confirm that voters truly voted in the 2020 election, confirming voters are really registered at a particular address. So since that meeting, I canvassed the 66 homes on my residential street and confirmed each and every voter, each person who voted or didn't vote, who was registered, who was not, and the voter registration records were perfect with, with the testimony of my neighbors that I talked to who know and trust me, and told me the truth, I presume, about who voted and who didn't, and I found zero anomalies on my residential street. 66 houses. Some people said, might say, well, it's an anomaly that of the 66 houses on your street, there wasn't some deviation, but if there was even a 10% deviation, I would have found maybe six or so questions, and I, and I didn't. So that's why I invite each of you to do the same. So I invite you to do the same. Please share that link with me specifically, and we'll look into that.
Josh, would you also add your video that you created to outline the process of the mail-in ballots?
Yeah, the process is on our website, so that video's on our website.
Make sure that's all together on fairly the same page, so I can get to it.
Yep. And, and the term full forensic audit doesn't appear anywhere on the Election Assistance Commission's website, which is the federal agency tasked with helping local states and counties to administer elections in compliance with federal law. There's a lot of talk, there was earlier discussion, about something called a risk limiting audit. That is the terminology used in, in the election space. So that's a clarification on that.
So what's the transitory level on your street? You might live in a zero, an upper scale. So the problems are going to be where there's high transitory levels.
Okay, we need to bring that back.
I would consider Saratoga Springs fairly transitory.
Let's go ahead and get back to a public comment. So anyone else who would like to comment on the audit?
We all held our breath for a minute there.
Mike Carpenter from Orem. I wasn't going to comment, but what's concerning to me is for the last couple decades, the legislators in this state have done everything to take away transparency, oversight, and visibility in our elections. They count my vote ridiculousness, to steal seats in the Republican Party, the mail-in voting, which federally, we've had commissions proving that they're fraudulent, and yet they pushed them on us anyway. I don't remember voting for this abdication of my vote, or the lack of control in my municipality. This rigged choice voting is just another way to obscure visibility and make it impossible to prove who actually won, without asking a computer. As this gentleman said, I'm in software as well. You can't trust these machines. You can't trust them at all. They're done by a handful of people, and you don't know what their designs are. These machines are bunk. They need to go, and our rights and our authority need to be returned to us. You can easily run elections at a precinct level, and then you know. They're on a small level, there's so many people counting votes, that it's almost impossible to commit the fraud. You're only going to get, you know, $100, $120 voters per precinct. So if you've suddenly got 600 votes in a precinct, there's a problem. But the way we're doing it now, it's just a pile of money that can be shifted around and reallocated as the votes are needed, as we saw in November. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just want to thank you guys so much. My name is John Bills. I'm actually from Salt Lake County, but I just wanted to voice my opinions today and share and address the county clerk, Josh Daniels, comments. My understanding of a full forensic audit, and it's very limited, but my understanding is it's three-pronged. It has to do with inspections, forensic inspections of machines. It has to do with inspecting the veracity and legitimacy of the ballots, and it has to do with canvassing. So three-pronged step. And as I, and as other people have said, Arizona has established the model for the entire country. They have had a cyber expert team inspect the, the ballots and the, the machines, and they are canvassing, and just put out a canvas report not too long ago. But I want to also address what I heard someone else say about, I believe his name's Mike, the person that was on the Zoom, is this is not about confirming Utah County's, you know, how red Utah County is. This is about restoring election integrity in this state, in this county, and in the entire country, because we've already lost election integrity. It's a matter of whether we can get it back. It's restoring faith and trust in the elections. And there are people all over this country. This is a populist movement that is rising up all over this country, and I guarantee in county commission meetings across this country, there are people that are here for the first time, like myself, voicing their opinions, because they have had enough, and we are ready to inspect, and we have the right as citizens to scrutinize the legitimacy of our elections, because if we don't have fair and honest elections, we don't have a country.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I can't not say anything. Shauna Phelps. I am for a full audit of the three different areas that he indicated. My problem is not with Democrat versus Republican. My problem is all the dishonest people who are currently in office right now, which would be mostly Republicans. I think they stink to high heavens. We have our governor, who was our lieutenant governor, who was in charge of the election, and who won. Wow. Imagine that, being in charge of electing yourself. So there's a lot of issues that need to be taken care of, and it's not just our elections. It's all kinds of things. It's all some of these rules and regulations that have been put in by legislators and senators over decades, because we've had problems with our elections since we've been going electronic. So, lots of things need to be fixed.
Alice, is there anyone else online? I, I don't see anybody on my screen. Just want to make sure. No one's phoning in? Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jared Harding. I live in Mapleton, and I wanted to just kind of bring up the topic of arithmetic. So I design homes for a living, and I use arithmetic every day. Addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. Fractions are kind of tough, but you get used to it. But we are talking about such a simple system here. We have a certain amount of people in the United States that voted, and we have a way of counting them with the ballots that they filled out, and if we can take this just to a simple matter of counting the ballots, looking at the, the canvassing situation to be able to identify a voter to a location, then we should be able to come to a conclusion and, and illuminate what fraud has taken case, or has taken place here in our country. We are complicating this with, with ridiculous algorithms. We're talking about basic arithmetic, addition and subtraction, and mostly, we're just addition. We just need to count all the damn things up. I'm calling for us to get rid of all the election, electronic counting methods. I just heard a comment yesterday from a gentleman from France, a country of 80 million people. They conduct all of their elections based on a precinct level, and they were able to count up the entire countries of, count a country of 80 million people in two hours. We're taking weeks and weeks and weeks to count all this information, and we're, we're simply looking at arithmetic, like add the damn things up, and let's get this thing done. So that's it.
Thank you. Well, let's not be shy now. No buy-in in the back row. I know you sit back there on purpose, but I can see you from here.
My name is Elaney Wilding, and I live in Orem, and I was, I am someone who actually went to Nevada in December to do a door-to-door canvassing on mail-in ballots, and to find out if the people who actually voted from that address lived at that address. So it was very simple. We had a list of names of people who actually voted from that address, and we went to the door and we asked them, does this person live here? We found, I found, with me and my partner, we were in Las Vegas, and we went from one end of the valley to the other over a few days, and we found that there was over 50% who did not live at the address, who had voted from that address. And it ranged from anything from, that's my sister's ex-husband who hasn't lived here for nine years, to, my husband did vote, but we went in person, and we didn't, he didn't send in a mail-in ballot. And so that is, that is my personal experience. Because of that, I decided that I was going to go to Washington DC on January 6th, so that I could add my body to that group that said, not, not as an insurrectionist, but to say, I personally am a firsthand witness that can say that there was fraud in the election. In Nevada, in that, in Las Vegas, we had people there from Texas, California, Utah, which, you know, myself, Utah, and from Nevada. And there's a lot of ways that this can be done. I did it on my own dime. I was willing to do that, because I felt like there was something fishy in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Vanessa Farnsworth, and I'm from Lehigh. I have a great issue with mail-in ballots. My son was gone for two years, and I got a ballot every year for him. I had his signature. I could have sent in a ballot illegally, but it still came, came for two years. The third year, it did not come. For this election? For this election. It showed my ballot never even made it, and I put it in the drop box. I never put it through the mail. So I went and did another ballot on election day. It has never shown up. So I totally do not trust mail-in ballots.
Ma'am, if you could come give me your info, I'd like to walk through that, and verify that, and make sure that we understand what, what happened there.
Anyone else who would like to make a public comment?
Your Tom Freedom Coalition said they've gotten voter rolls from you, and that they're running it through the analyzer. Did you work with, with those folks?
That's probably true.
Well, wait a minute. Either, either of those, really?
Well, who specifically? Give me a name of a person. I didn't-
Jennifer.
Yeah, I've worked with Jennifer.
And she said that they have received just recently from you-
Yeah.
-the Utah County voter rolls.
Yeah.
And, okay, and that they are running it through the analyzer.
Yeah, I'm not your enemy. I'm not the problem. I'm not the person that stands in the way, so.
Yes, so you did provide it to them.
Yeah. And, and anybody who is specifically involved in any of the detailed work, please come talk to me, and more than happy to collaborate. So, I've got a lot of people with loud opinions, which is great. I have loud opinions, if you know me on Facebook. But, but the point is, like, if you're really into details, I want to collaborate with you. I get there's a lot of people that have strong opinions. That's great, but I really want to collaborate with people who are involved in those kinds of analytical details, because I will be more than happy to work together on, on that.
We can't do a canvassing unless it's done right, and you're going to need affidavits if someone, if you meet someone in a home who said-
Sure.
-no, I did not vote.
Right.
And we find indication they did.
Yep.
So-
Yeah, there's no better way than-
If this roll right here doesn't do anything unless you're going to put us in, unless we're going to organize in a fashion that will be-
Well, what I'm saying is, for those who are interested in canvassing their street that they live on, I can get you that data, and enable you to do that, because you know your neighbors, right? So if you have some curiosity yourself to talk to your neighbors and do some of your own canvassing, I'd be more than happy to help you with that.
This is going to have to be an effort that, I'm guessing, 5,000 homes are going to have to be-
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking about some sort of a full-scale authorized canvassing effort, that will require money.
That's what I'm, that's what we're talking about. Absolutely.
Okay. Are there any other public comments then? Then, are there any on phone, Alice, or Zoom? None on Zoom. So we have no other comments?
All right. So with that, then, I will make a motion to adjourn.
We have a closed session, but we can close that.
Oh, wait. All right. I guess we have to end this session, then. I have to stay for a closed session, too. You guys get to go, but I, but I have to stay.
Okay, then that will do it, and we will now move into our closed session. Thank you, everyone, and actually, thank you for coming.